City County Planning Commission, please come to order. Ms. Martin, would you please call the row?
Yes ma'am. Commissioner Rich?
Here. Welcome back, Velma.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volgert? Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison? Commissioner Houston?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am, and I do thank you all for the cards, the texts, the prayers. It's been very encouraging to me and I do appreciate it all. I appreciate it. And thank you too, Mr. Houston, for being here and all that he's done. Thank you all. Don't want to say too much. Everyone's had the chance to review the minutes of the August 1st meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? No corrections, then I'd ask for motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, in a second, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Stay.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Houston?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner, I request that you order that the record include all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualification for each staff witness. And also request that you administer those witnesses.
Yes, sir. Swear to tell the truth before this commission.
I do.
Thank you all. The financial report was in the packet. Any questions on that for the July report? No questions? Next, we have the subdivision approvals and the site development plans. Any questions on those items?
Question on number four. So we're finished with that?
This is the subdivision site development plan, but that, the next item is the letters of credit and performance bonds.
I'm sorry.
Okay, if there are no credit, there are no questions on that, then we will move down to the letters of credit and performance bonds. And you'll notice that you have amended agenda at your seat, and we have three items added. So we have a question?
I'm sorry, I jumped.
No, that's, no, that's quite all right, sir.
Your excitement just...
It overbounds.
I just got through telling Mr. Moore that I'd be disappointed if you didn't ask about that one. So, the, I'll just say, lumping that in with all them, four of these six are a great effort of staff over the past few months to clean up defaulted projects, what we've talked about before, and happy to report that these have all been accepted. And they are in good standing and are now ready to release those bonds and have been accepted by the counties and the order of the city, so.
Well, thank you all for your hard work on that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Then I'd ask for motion, please.
I'll move.
Second. Thank you, and second, thank you.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Houston?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. We do not have any unfinished business, so that brings us to the first item tonight for public hearing. Docket number 2019-01-RWC. WKU Student Life Foundation has filed an application to close approximately .09 acres or 3,816 square feet of unimproved right-of-way bounded by Park Street, High Street, Cabell Drive, and East 14th Avenue, as well as .18 acre of 7,000, or 7,725 square feet of unimproved right-of-way. That is a portion of East 15th off of High Street. And we will have the staff report. Mr. Peterson?
So all of that was a pretty big mouthful to say that they're closing a portion of two alleys that you see in the middle of the block bounded by the streets that Chair Runner described. So you have the little sliver in the middle of the block there, and then what would have been the extension of East 15th Avenue there. So that's the only two portions that are requesting to be closed. This is part of a new commuter parking lot currently under construction for WKU. So, moving along the existing zoning, WKU is, of course, a state agency and exempt from zoning, so the zoning is still currently RM3. The existing land use you see is a combination of vacant around the majority of the closings, but also surrounded by some multifamily and single-family. And then, of course, there is the exhibit with the gray areas you see hatched there on the screen that are the areas to be closed. Page one of the staff report, you see the zoning ordinance requirements in section 3.16, explaining the requirements of a right-of-way closure. And then the applicants have submitted letters from the agencies that are, that meet those requirements. Just point out, the only one of notes, Bowling Green Public Works. It's just noted that their approval is conditional, and it's conditioned upon the final approval by the city commission as that is the next step in the process, once this board makes its, holds the hearing and makes its recommendation. Page two of the staff report, you find the findings of fact per KRS Kentucky Revised Statutes, Chapter 82, Section 405, A, B, and C there. That identification of the property owners in or abutting the right-of-way to be closed has to be made by the applicant. Written notice has to be given to those same property owners, and that all property owners abutting the right-of-way to be closed have to give their written and notarized consent to the closing. So, the applicants have met all those criteria listed in both the zoning ordinance and the KRS chapter. So if this application is approved, the applicants plan to consolidate the closed right-of-way with the adjoining properties. And then we are recommending one condition of approval, that a plat consolidating the closed right-of-way with adjacent properties must be submitted to the planning commission and recorded at the Warren County Courthouse within 120 days of final approval of the right-of-way closure by the city. And just to note with that, we have already received that preliminary plat in our office. Has not been reviewed yet, but we expect that to take place within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience? Do we have any opposition to this request? No questions, no opposition, then I would ask for motion, please.
Take the motion to approve the right-of-way closing docket number 2019-1-RWC with the following condition: A plat consolidating the closed right-of-way with adjacent properties must be submitted to the planning commission and recorded in the Warren County Courthouse with 120 days of final approval of the right-of-way closure by the Bowling Green City Commission. Motion is based on the findings of fact presented in the staff report and the testimony presented at this public hearing that the right-of-way closing is compliant with Section 3.16 of the Warren County zoning ordinance.
Thank you, and a second, thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Houston?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am, and the motion carried. The second item, docket number 2019-07DP. Stratford Holdings LLC, Southern Kentucky Performing Arts Center, and Warren County, Kentucky, have filed an application to amend the general development plan, which is the development plan conditions on a tract of land containing approximately 4.14 acres located at Block 5 of downtown Bowling Green. That's 601 and 635 College Street, 636 Center Street, and 314 East 7th Avenue. The property is zoned planned unit development with the general development plan. And we will have Mr. Peterson with the staff report.
Chair Runner?
Thank you.
So, we had pre-application date on May 7th, 2019, for this application. And don't let the 74-page staff report intimidate you, there's just a lot of reference information in this one. This application is mostly to just address outstanding code enforcement issues located at 635 College Street, which is the Kentucky Grand Hotel. I'll go through the maps. We see the aerial you described. The streets around this property, you can see Skypack, the Farmer's Market Pavilion, the old Taylor's Chapel, which is now Sookie Marketplace, and then the Kentucky Grand Hotel in the corner there. So, the existing zoning, it is zoned PUD. Existing land use, mostly public and commercial. Future land use is government and mixed-use commercial. Everybody's pretty familiar with downtown. We have included the TIF map. This is in the heart of the TIF district as well. And then, we have landscape exhibit, which I'll talk about in just a second. And then I'll leave it on this aerial exhibit before you. To start with on this one, I'm going to jump to the second page and go to the last bullet point under Points to Consider, provides a good explanation of why we're here tonight. So in March of 2017, we issued a notice of violation for the property located at 635 College Street, identifying several items within the development that are not in compliance with the zoning ordinance or approved planned unit development. Items related to signage, landscaping, parking, permitted uses for the development, compliance with planned unit development concept plan, and compliance with the TIF district. So the proposed amendment tonight aims to take care of a lot of these issues and begins the process of bringing that development into compliance with the hopes by all parties of resolving outstanding code enforcement action applicable to the Stratford Holdings LLC property. So, what we're, what the application is tonight is to bring basically what's already built there into compliance. With that, as the property in that block is all, development was also included Warren County and Skypack. Also, they have also agreed to and signed off on the application as well. So, with that, I'm going to go through a couple of things on this. I'll go ahead and finish the points to consider, then I'll point out a couple of things. But, the properties are designated as institutional government, mixed-use residential on the future land use map. And the proposed changes presented tonight remain consistent with the future land use map category. And the proposed development complies with the applicable criteria addressed in the site characteristics review. And then, lastly, the proposed development plan amendment complies with a majority of the review criteria. And then, of course, compatibility is determined by the planning commission. I will say throughout this process, it's taken a while because there's quite a few different moving parts with all of this and how it was developed, and then a whole lot of regulation. But, the applicant has worked with staff on creating this, and we were involved in the input process and helping create this. So, move on to page three of the staff report, just looking at the general development plan conditions. And then this is also true for the concept and the narrative. Most, a majority of these changes are just housekeeping items, updates, name changes from binding elements to development plan conditions, cleaning up, things that are just automatically required by the zoning ordinance or things that have already been built and no longer matter. So that's what a lot of the striking is from these. So, I'm only going to touch on just a few things. Number four is the landscaping with the property. That was one of the code compliance issues. That landscape plan that was referenced earlier has been submitted, and is, again, that was also viewed by both the county and Skypack. And, so that is presented tonight, and that is one of the changes. Number six deals with the uses of the property. So, that just basically changes and adds uses that are currently being, the property's currently being used for, and it's not just Stratford Holdings, but the rest of the block as well. There were some uses that weren't clearly defined in there, so that is being added to clean that up. And then, the remaining of those is more of those housekeeping items that I spoke of earlier. So, again, mostly just adding uses and then altering things to match what is out there. Page five is where you start the concept plan and the written concept plan. Again, under uses, you see those same changes there that match those development plan conditions, as well as the table on page six, again, is making that fit to what is out there today. With that, unless you would like me to go over any of those specific items, I think I will just stop there and take any questions, and I know the applicants are here as well.
Have any questions, applicant?
There are rumors that they're going to close that street between this development and the Dollar General. Is there any truth to that rumor? And is that where they're going to park the food trucks?
Interesting, I don't know. I haven't heard that. So I don't have any firsthand knowledge of that.
Okay, well that's what the rumors have been, and I just wonder, so nobody's talked to you about that?
No, no. But, closing, if, is that, what street is that? Sixth? Center? Yeah, I have no idea. That would be a city, a city street. So, if, I would assume if the city chooses to close that, they'll have to go through the same street closure process as we just went through earlier. Or, they may have other means to do that. I would have to defer to Hamp on what the, what the options are for the city to close the street.
Where are they talking about putting the food trucks?
I'm not aware of that either.
Well, you had that, it was in...
Right, right now, they just park them under the pavilion or near where the farmer's market's held.
Under the pavilion?
Yeah, just in the existing parking area that's there now.
Any other questions for Mr. Peterson before we hear from the applicant? Thank you.
Evening Commissioners, Mark Alcott. I was here last meeting when Ms. Unseld was sworn in. It's good to see you again. The other ones, I've seen you a few times over the years, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you. As Ben said, this has been a process where we've worked with Ben and Rachel Monica. And we made all the recommendations that staff has asked us to do in this, and basically they're binding elements, and now they're development plan conditions. And so, these will be recorded, and everybody's happy that this is getting done. And we've got a few other thresholds that we've got to get that are not before this commission. But if you have any specific questions, we'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions before I open it up to the audience? Any questions for Mr. Alcott?
Mark, help me understand very quickly. Typically, when a zoning comes before us, it's a specific piece of property. And in this case, it appears to be the entire block. Is that just because of the way the hotel integrates with the rest of the block here?
Well, the zoning question, in the original concept plan, it called for, in the TIF district, for hotels, shops, retail, all those things, but it didn't specifically have in Block 5 hotel. It had residential uses and that type of thing, which hotels, if you want to make a fine argument, technically fall in there. And that's what they wanted to make sure, is that we had hotel designated. And so, we also put in farmer's market and a couple of other uses that are being done. And so that's the main reason for that zone issue.
Anything else from Commissioners? Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience concerning this application? Do we have any opposition to this amendment? No opposition, no questions, thank you, sir. Then I will ask for motion, please.
Take the motion to approve the general development plan amendment, docket number 2019-7DP. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and actions presented in this staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes, economic, physical, and social nature within the area of the property in question. And I request that the findings of fact and recommendations included a summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, we need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Houston?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Balance? Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am, and the motion carried, thank you. The next item, 2019-32Z County. Cecil and Sharon Jenkins and Frances Nagel have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 2.5 acres located at 1347 Woodburn Allen Springs Road from agriculture to residential estate with a general development plan. I'll have the staff report from Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on July 11th for the property you see outlined here in yellow, which is zoned agriculture, current use is single-family. In that area, it's also mostly single-family and agriculture with some vacant tracks scattered around. And the future land use map is also designated as agriculture, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second. But I'll go ahead and put that up so we can reference it as we go along. The applicants are requesting to rezone this property in order to develop it with a maximum of two single-family lots. There is a house currently on the property, and as you can see here, they would just, they're requesting to put that lot line where now they have two lots for another single-family use, which the proposed density at that point would be .8 dwelling units per acre. I mentioned the future land use map. Because the property is a non-conforming agricultural parcel that is less than five acres in size and only one new lot is being created, there was no future land use map amendment required with this application. And so the proposed RE-zone is listed as a potentially compatible zoning designation in the agriculture flume category. And the proposed development may be appropriate if this body determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. On the first page of your staff report, below that, you'll see the compatibility with surrounding development section. I just highlighted one thing, one thing there. There are several mature trees located on the property. I'll come back to the points to consider in just a second. Going on to page two, under Site Characteristics Review, wastewater adequacy. The existing residents will utilize its existing septic system. And the proposed lot will also be served by an onsite septic system. And also want to mention the prime farmland and soil suitability. Property contains soil types that are classified as prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance, as well as soil types that are classified as very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. Below that, the Site Design and Compatibility Review section. Just wanted to point out building orientation. The existing home faces Woodburn Allen Springs Road, and staff recommends that a new home on the property should also face Woodburn Allen Springs Road. I'll go on to page three and go through the six development plan conditions that the applicants have submitted. Number one, maximum number of lots will be two, and the minimum lot size will be one acre. Two, each residence shall be developed with a minimum square footage of 1,200 square feet. Number three, no metal siding is allowed, no plain-faced block will be allowed. Number four, the location of any proposed driveway will be coordinated with and approved by KYTC. Number five, each lot shall be, shall be approved for an onsite septic system by the Barron River District Health Department. And number six, no manufactured homes shall be allowed. Below that, we have the Focus 2030 category review. Staff reviewed 14 items. Five of those, we thought were left up to your determination, including LU113, if the proposal is compatible with the area. LU2, if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. As well as NCR241, if the proposal is located in an area where infrastructure already exists will not result in increased amount of development pressure on the countryside, and if it's in compliance with NCR241. And HN21HN4. This body should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location and if it will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. I will note there were three items that staff felt that this application did not comply with, and that'd be LU214, PR17, NCR116, as the applicants did not address the existing trees on the property. So I'm going to go back to the first page and just read over the points to consider. Again, I won't read all of that, but again, just about the flume compliance, that this is exempt from the future land use map as it is a non-conforming parcel. The proposed development complies with a majority of the site characteristics review criteria. And the proposed general development plan complies with a majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility, and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, that is all I have. The applicants are just to my left over here, and I'm sure they're happy to answer any questions if you have them, as am I.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
May be a question for generally for staff. As I look at this proposed division, if we, if we include the electric easement, this does not appear to be a buildable lot. Is that just an illusion?
They're going to relocate the existing utilities to remove the easement.
I see, okay.
I believe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anything the applicant would like to add? Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Do, please.
Yes, if the applicant would come forward, please. We have a question? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Claypool. Thank you. State your name for us, please, sir, and your address.
I'm Claypool.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do, yes.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
I think it's the house that's currently there. How many square feet?
Fifty, your house about 1,500 square feet?
About 1,500.
Your house is going to be 1,200?
Uh, 12 or 13, that's normally the house. He builds the same house all, over and over, so, yeah.
I guess, I have the same question that he did. That 30-foot electric easement's going to be moved off of there?
They're going to move the line, yes.
Okay, so that'll be moved on to someone else's property?
No, probably on the side of this one. Warren Rule Electric will make that determination.
I agree, I think it could be a buildable lot at this point, so.
There's enough room for, for all that, septic and house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any opposition to this request? No other questions from anyone in the audience? No opposition, then I'd ask for motion, thank you.
Take the motion to approve the zoning map amendment together with conditions upon the general development plan, docket number 2019-32Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by compliance with the following, compliance with the objectives and the action items presented in this staff report. Therefore, proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses' public hearing.
Thank you, sir, we need a second. Thank you all.
Commissioner Houston?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Rich?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am, the motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all. And, our, yes ma'am, yes ma'am. Thank you all. The last two items, our docket number 2019-33ZBG. Elite Properties has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately .239, 2397 acres located at the northwest corner of Russellville Road and Whispering Hills Boulevard from RM3, which is multifamily residential, to general business with a general development plan. And also on docket number 2019-V21, the applicants have requested a variance on that same property. And as I stated, it is zoned RM3 multifamily residential. And we'll have the staff report for Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Runner.
Thank you, ma'am.
I guess just to start off here, this may look familiar to some of you. I know not, not all of you were present at the June 6th hearing, but there was a similar application before this commission on June 6th. The applicant is back with some proposed changes compared to what was originally proposed, and I will go through all of those here in just a second. I know that at the last hearing, there were also several members of the public here that stated concerns related to traffic, neighborhood character, permitted uses and lighting. And so, I think there might be some, some of those same folks here tonight, maybe even some other members of the public who are interested in this application. So I'm sure we will also hear from them, as well as the applicant. But I will just jump into the staff report, and feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions about what was different from last time, or what's new tonight. And we'll just get started here. So, this is the aerial view of the property. As you mentioned, it's located at the corner of Whispering Hills Boulevard and Russellville Road. Current zoning of the property is RM3, which is multifamily residential. The current use of the property is vacant, and you'll see that the surrounding area is comprised of a mixture of single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and public institutional uses. And that there are also some vacant tracks in the general vicinity. The future land use designation for the property is mixed-use residential. This designation applies to mixed-use areas where taken as a whole, the primary land use is residential and a variety of housing types and densities balanced by complementary retail, office, institutional, and civic uses. The distribution of land among these various activities shall be implemented through specific zoning with standards addressing the form and character... with standards addressing the form and character of development to ensure compatibility. This designation applies to urbanized areas being redeveloped with the primary use as residential where complementary, commercial, and services are provided in a contiguous area. Here, development standards should be tailored to emphasize an urban character and a mix and intensity of development appropriate to this unique center of activity. Standalone commercial developments should not exceed ten percent of any contiguous area designated as mixed-use residential, and no commercial footprint should exceed ten thousand square feet. Compatibility should be addressed by applying policies in LU-one-one-three in conjunction with a general development plan. So, this is the, uh, general development plan or preliminary development plan that was submitted by the applicant with this application. So I'll jump on to the site characteristics review, and this is the proposed layout, uh, for the site. Setbacks would adhere to the general business standards set forth in the zoning ordinance with the exception of the rear yard setback for which a variance is requested. I'll get to that in just a minute. Under transportation infrastructure, staff has noted that the property has frontage on both Whispering Hills Boulevard and Russellville Road. Uh, development plan condition number eight, uh, states that the property will be developed with one entrance along Whispering Hills Boulevard and one entrance along Russellville Road. These entrances shall be coordinated with and approved by the Bowling Green Public Works Department and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. The Bowling Green Public Works staff has confirmed that the proposed access onto Whispering Hills Boulevard would be permitted with three conditions. Number one, access onto Whispering Hills Boulevard from the site is to be right turn only with a sign installed at the exit indicating this. Number two, a one-way sign is to be installed facing the driveway access in the island of Whispering Hills Boulevard. And number three, the existing island on Whispering Hills Boulevard cannot be crossed or cut out for access from the site. Moving on, on page three, under site design and compatibility, under the surrounding uses, I had mentioned those earlier when I had referenced the, uh, existing land use map here. I'll jump back to that really quick, though. Um, the applicant is proposing to construct a pharmacy on the property and have committed that no portion of the property shall be used for adult entertainment or any sale, rental, or display of pornography or adult books, bingo parlor, pawn shop, tattoo parlor, bar lounge, packaged liquor sales, fuel sales, or any sale of alcoholic beverages by the drink, except in a restaurant. And I will note that fuel sales is a newly prohibited use, uh, that was not included with the previous application back in June. The proposed general business zone would also allow other uses on the property, including vehicle service, vehicle repair, vehicle sales, and commercial parking. The planning commission should determine if these uses are appropriate for this location. Under surrounding architectural features, staff has noted that the surrounding area contains a mixture of one- and two-story residential, commercial, and industrial structures of varying ages. The applicant has agreed in development plan condition three that the maximum building height for any new structure would be twenty feet. The previous application was thirty feet. Building materials, the majority of the structures in the immediate area are comprised of brick or stone. There are a couple of structures that also utilize vinyl. The applicant committed in development plan condition number seven, that facades visible from Russellville Road shall be constructed with at least seventy percent, there's a typo there, it says fifty in the text, but it's supposed to be seventy, so I apologize for that because the previous application was fifty percent, so we forgot to change, uh, the text there. So it should be seventy percent brick, stone, masonry, or cementitious material, architectural metal panels utilizing concealed fasteners, glass, or other modern masonry material. The use of plain-faced or split-faced block shall be prohibited. The previous application allowed split-face block. Under building orientation, the applicant has committed that the front facade of the proposed structure shall face Russellville Road. And under signage, the applicant has agreed in development plan condition two, that signage on the property shall be limited to a maximum of one sign, which shall not exceed six feet in height with a total sign-face area of fifty square feet on each sign-face. The proposed sign shall also be externally illuminated and will be a monument-style sign. Any wall signage would meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The previous application proposed signage to be twenty-four feet in height with a maximum sign-face area of a hundred and fifty square feet, and there were no restrictions on the type of sign or restrictions on the type of lighting that would be used. Under landscaping and screening, landscaping will meet the standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, including, uh, landscaping for vehicle use areas in between incompatible uses. And also, uh, there is a reference in development plan condition number nine, which is a new development plan condition. Since, uh, the previous hearing, the developer agrees to construct a wooden privacy fence no less than eight feet in height along the northwest side of the property, which be, which would be the, uh, top property line here adjacent to the existing single-family use that's, uh, along this property line right here. Moving on, the bottom of page three, I'm, I just referenced several of the development plan conditions, just going through the site design and compatibility review, and also in the, uh, site characteristics review section, so I'm not gonna repeat those, but I will hit on the ones that were not previously covered. So number one, all utility improvements on the subject property shall be located underground. Number three, uh, the proposed structure, along with any accessory structures, shall not exceed twenty-one-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The previous application called for three-thousand-five-hundred square feet. Moving down to number five, hours of operation for any non-residential use on the property shall be between eight AM and six PM. The previous application proposed hours from six AM to ten PM. And I believe I've already covered six, seven, eight, nine. So I'm gonna move on to the focus twenty thirty category review. Staff evaluated thirteen items. We found that six items were in compliance and that seven items needed to be evaluated for compliance by the planning commission. The first of those, LU-one-one-three, which looks at our items of compatibility, and the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. Next, LU-two, which looks at quality of development and character. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Next, on page five, LU-two-point-five, which looks at protection of nearby neighborhoods. Next, LU-two-five-two and HN-one-point-two, which looks at compatibility considerations for infill development. And then last, HN-one and HN-one-point-three, which look at the impact of infill development on existing character and development patterns and the effect on nearby neighborhoods. Next, uh, there are two variances that are also requested this evening as a part of the, uh, the zone change application that is before you. So there are two references here on the variance plat, and so I will touch on those. The first comes from section four-six-eight-C-one of the zoning ordinance, and states that any commercial use in the general business zone that's located adjacent to a single-family residential use shall have a forty-foot rear yard setback. The proposed building is shown to be ten feet from the rear property line. That's the distance between this property line and the backside of the building. So the applicant is requesting a variance of thirty feet from the required forty-foot rear yard setback for the building to be located ten feet from the rear property line. Next, section five-two-four-F-five-C from the zoning ordinance states that for retail with a drive-through or pickup window, such as a pharmacy, um, that any pickup window be located one hundred feet from the nearest residential use. They are proposing for the pickup window, which is kind of this little, uh, cutout here where the hand is. They are proposing for that to be located twenty feet from the nearest residential use, and have requested a variance of eighty feet for the pickup window to be located in that specific location. I will note that there is another standard reference there. Um, that is only required if there is a speaker that is utilized in conjunction with the pickup window, and in this case, there would be no speaker. The variance requested is for the pickup window itself. Next, we have the variance findings from KRS-one-hundred-two-four-three. Those are there for your reference. The applicants did submit a narrative with their application to address these findings. That is listed on page six, and so I will read what was submitted by the applicant. The applicant is requesting two variances. Taking into consideration the existing lot width being the limiting factor, the applicant does not feel that the thirty-foot variant, variance of the rear yard setback or the eighty-foot variance for the pickup window will have any impact whatsoever on the adjacent property. Furthermore, the applicant has placed the pickup window in such a way that the building will shield the residential neighborhood from any unwanted noise. The applicant does not feel that the approval of these variances would result in a hardship to any of the adjacent properties or surrounding areas, nor would it alter the character of the general vicinity or create a hazard to the public. Again, that was submitted by the applicant. That's just verbatim what they supplied on their application. With that, I'm gonna jump back to the points to consider on page one. First, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map in the mixed-use residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria. The proposed development plan also complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, and if the proposed variances are approved, would meet the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. Next, the planning commission should consider if the proposed commercial development on the small lot at the entrance of the subdivision will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And last, the planning commission should consider if the proposed development, including the proposed and permitted uses, are compatible with the surrounding area. I believe that concludes the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicant is also here if you have questions for him.
Commissioners, you have questions?
Rachel, on point one, access onto Whispering Hills Boulevard from the site is to be a right turn only with a sign installed at the exit indicating this. So if we go to the, the proposed site development.
Hmm, that's referencing this?
Right.
Right here.
That does, if, is there a way that that, and the applicant can answer this, that that could be altered to put a curb or something to that effect? People don't pay attention to signs.
Hmm.
And that that could be, uh, instead of a open-ended driveway where people could cut across the curb, or people want to cut across, whether they do or not, across that curb coming into Whispering Hills, could be altered with a curb that would access only a right lane turn?
That is something that's been done in other developments.
Yes.
It would have to be coordinated with the city public works department because it's my suspicion that a portion of that would be located within their right-of-way. So if that's something they would permit, I, I feel like that would be doable.
Now, anyway, we, the applicant might consider curbing that so that people can only turn right.
Sure. And I guess you might want to ask the applicant's engineer. I know that they are here this evening and could maybe help answer your question a little bit better than I could, as far as the design and layout.
Amen. Um, my question is, following up on Dean's, um, help me understand the traffic flow here. So if I, if I'm reading this correctly, the only way to enter is from Russellville Road.
Correct.
And so to exit, one could only assume that they, well, they have to go right.
Right.
So if they live in Whispering Hills, they're gonna have to, that, they can't leave this development, they can't leave this business and go in, back into Whispering Hills because they can't get across the median, correct?
Right.
Okay, and, um...
Unless, and I don't know if it's possible to do a U-turn at the entrance of the subdivision. That would be the only other way, without having to go back out on Russellville Road and do a U-turn somewhere else.
They can go out on Russellville Road, though, can't they?
They could turn left, yes.
Left and right.
From, from, they could turn left or right exiting Whispering Hills.
Yeah. But they can't go back out the entrance?
Correct.
Onto Russellville Road.
It's only one way in, as shown on this plan, because...
It kind of looked like it was split.
Yeah, so it's kind of confusing because, so here's the proposed pickup window, and the zoning ordinance requires a certain number of stacking spaces from the pickup window. And so those stacking spaces are located in this area here. So really, the travelway in is on this portion, and so you would enter here. People in the drive-through or waiting to pick up their prescriptions would queue up kind of in this lane here. So you can only enter the property from Russellville Road.
So that's the reason for no entrance from Russellville Road, is, is these stacking spaces that we're referring to? There's an entrance, there's no exit. I'm sorry, no exit.
Yes, because there's, because otherwise you'd be driving into oncoming traffic. And so that's why it was designed that way, because of the stacking space for the, the pickup window.
Okay, and you referenced, um, Kentucky Transportation Cabinet had approved this with, with some, uh, with some restrictions?
Conditions were imposed by the Public Works Department from the city Bowling Green for the access on Whispering Hills. The Transportation Cabinet, uh, on Russellville Road has looked at this proposal and has agreed that they would permit the entrance shown here in its configuration on, on this plan.
Both of them are, are in agreement with this configuration?
Yes.
Last question regards the, uh, is regarding the, um, the pickup window. If there is no speaker, help me understand what the purpose might be for a distance. Uh, so, um, my understanding is this one has no speaker, but there's still a distance criteria.
Yeah, the zoning ordinance still requires that separation, and it could be just, I mean, if we're having general conversation at a window in proximity to a residential property, I'm not sure, um, that, I, it's my suspicion that that's why that standard was implemented in the first place, just for noise considerations.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Rachel, one other question, we had this in June. There are five parking places, if that's correct, uh, designed, and the applicant stated possibly three full-time employees, two to three.
I think, if my memory serves me correctly, I have the minutes from last time, just in case. Uh, but I believe, let's see. Said that, uh, the applicant expected a maximum of two employees and after sometime after opening approximately twenty-five to forty customers. That was stated at the last hearing, but he may need to confirm that.
Yes, and one of the questions that came up in last time, i- if hypothetically there are two employees at the store, or, or maybe three, that only leaves two parking places for retail customers. Does, does this meet our parking requirements?
It does. So our parking requirement is just based on a general retail use.
Okay.
And so it accommodates both parking spaces for customers and employees.
That was a question that was asked last time, just so we don't labor the point.
Yes, it does meet the requirements based on the proposed use.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
And on this variance plat where it says the two-hundred-and-thirty feet?
That, that's a, that's a typo. It's corrected on the, uh, PowerPoint.
Okay.
Yeah, that, sorry, I should have mentioned that. So the packet in your copy is, or copy in your packet is not what's shown on the screen, but what's on the screen is correct.
That's what I want to make sure.
So could you recap that then, because I'm not sure I understood that.
Sure, so the rezoning exhibit had a typo for the, the variance request, uh, for the pickup window. It previously had the wrong reference for the distance required if there is a speaker.
Hmm.
And that was caught after packets were mailed out, so it's reflected on the PowerPoint. But what's shown in your packet on the rezoning exhibit may have a different measurement. But the one in your packet is incorrect.
Thank you.
What we're doing is eighty feet, thirty feet.
The request is a variance of eighty feet for the pickup window to be located twenty feet from the rear property line.
Other questions from the commissioners before we hear from the applicant? No other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear from the applicant, please.
Did you say an opposition?
Applicant, the applicant, sir. That's, that's, that's quite all right, sir. I didn't know if you wanted to address any of these questions, or if you just want to hear if, uh, from the opposition and try to address those questions.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, we'll go ahead and swear you in, if that's okay, if you'll give us your name and address.
My name is Al Plais. Uh, I live on twenty-six-eighteen Cross Ridge Street, Bowling Green, uh, four-two-one-zero-four.
And you swear to tell the truth.
Yes, I, I believe we'll have some questions for you, and so, uh, that, that way we've got you sworn in to, to answer those questions. Wait here, or just go back?
Uh, if, if you would...
Would you, I'll just...
Yeah.
Would you want to address the, a couple of questions we had here?
Absolutely.
About, or Lucaskin, the right turn onto Whispering Hills?
We'll swear, we'll swear Mr. Slavy in, then. Your name and address, please.
Lucas Slavy, ten fifteen...
Slavy, 1015 Chapling.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Warren, we can curb that and make that where it's, you would have to tear your car up to get, to go left. And, and instead of just a sign, I agree with you there, there's, people ignore signs. And if, if the city was, and I haven't, I haven't talked to the client about this, if the city and the neighborhood was open to it, there could be some landscaping in that median that would prevent you from crossing the median. That could be installed, as long as it didn't impact visibility and things, just as an idea.
Right now, there's none.
Right.
And it's a low curb?
Yes, it's easily driven over. But it could be landscaped with some evergreens or something that would prohibit you from driving across it.
So just before this question comes up, are, are you all willing to commit to a minimal amount of landscaping on that curb, if it suits the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we'll let, we'll let both of you sit down in the front, yeah, that'll be great.
And one other question about the parking.
Yes, sir.
So this will come up in our, in our conversations for our neighbors. You are anticipating five parking places, and you're, you anticipate your staff to use two to three of them?
Be maximum of two, yes, for, for the staff, as, for the parking spots. Maximum two spots for the, for the staff. I'm gonna work with, with Jayce, see if we can add more, more spots, more parking spots. We just have to figure out like the corners, we have some corners like by the entrance or like in the back. We just have to see how we can work out just to add more.
This will become a question, if, what, I hope your business grows, if this is approved, and you have four full-time staff that park there. How, how do you address that if, if you cannot put any more park, standalone parking places on this lot?
Sure, based on my experience for what we do, like for, for the, for the business, I will not need more than two employees. Like even though this is the maximum, as I said, it will be up to two. I would expect for the first couple of years, it'll be me and maybe my wife should be helping, that's it, yeah.
But, but in the future, if, because this will come up tonight, if you hope, again, hope your business succeeds and there's four full-time employees?
There is, thanks for your question, I just remembered this. I actually just spoke to the owner of the building behind, in case I might just buy it and, and use it just to park the car, in case.
Are you talking about a residential building, or a building to the...
Yes, because there's a, there's like a backyard, so maybe that can be used for, for my like personal parking, and we leave the rest, like those five spots for the customers. And this is not something like, it's just, we were just having a conversation, random conversation.
Just to clarify, if that happened, it would also have to be rezoned. Because the parking for the use would have to be located in a zone for the use that's being parked.
It would be still a house, like it's not gonna be demolished or anything. It'd be like my own property and I just park my car there.
But if you're, if you're parking cars associated with the commercial use, it would have to be rezoned, yeah.
I don't know.
Lucas, this might be one for you. If, if he does need additional parking, can he park cars end-to-end and extend that, extend that paved area out toward the corner a bit further? Or does that help at all?
You're talking about stacking them in there?
If it's his employees.
Could potentially employ parking.
Yeah, not for, not for customers.
Um, we, we would get into, we'd have to look at the site triangles and that kind of thing for that intersection, to make sure there was nothing impacting it there, but...
How about this corner, you know, like employee parking?
I mean, there, there is some potential to grab a spot or two, not a whole lot, that's not a very, not a very big lot. But from the way he's talking, it sounds like two people can handle the store at max capacity. So I, I don't know his business exactly, but we, we could squeeze a spot in there, I'd say, somewhere.
And Rachel...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a business other than just a drive-through. I mean, you can come into the...
It'd be like a walk-in?
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's just, it's just gonna be a pharmacy, it's not gonna be like a Walgreens or a CVS, it's gonna be more like a medicine arts.
It's not gonna be like a, like a retail chain business, no. And one of the things I would like to not, to add, based on, you know, the public request, is the restrictions, you know, like some businesses they don't want to have right at the entrance of their subdivision. I'm really open, you know, to, we tried to list the most usually known ones that usually people put, but if there's any suggested businesses they, they want to restrict, I'm more than happy to consider. Okay, thank you.
Because I know my pharmacy only has three parking places in the front.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The pharmacy that I use has three parking places on the side, and it has a drive-through. But they're a pharmacy only, and they have very little retail, other than just pharmaceutical things. And I was asking if your facility is gonna be that type, it's not gonna be a chain of any kind?
It's not, absolutely not, it's, it's just me, owner-operator.
Okay, so like a little hometown pharmacy?
Correct, yes, like a local business, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
The restricted businesses, what...
Yeah, so, so just, just as a point, with, as, as you all know, with any rezoning, we have to think into the future beyond this one potential business. So I do believe the, the, you know, it, it may not be a pharmacy forever. Again, we hope he grows success, successful business, as was stated. And sometimes when that happens, then existing business may move and something else comes in. So anything that you rezone to and would allow, would then be allowed to go back in there. So just, just wanted to make that point.
Rachel, do you want to list those that were those, that were prohibited?
Sure.
That, that weren't included on his list?
I, I can list the uses that would still be permitted, that were not listed as prohibited.
As exceptions.
That's what you're asking for, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
So additional uses, in addition to a pharmacy, that could be permitted, would include vehicle service, vehicle repair, vehicle sales, and commercial parking. And then also any other sort of retail use that could occupy that same space. I mean, anybody that's got a retail sales operation or service could also be permitted.
I have a question about the vehicle service, that's a service station?
We, we'll have the time, just in a moment, to let you ask questions. But I think that's what he's trying to clarify now, is we can get some of those eliminated, that he's willing to do that. So we may be able to get those taken care of and handle that question.
So, yeah.
Yes.
If the commission is in agreement, why don't we just go and cross this bridge? If he's willing to take all of those vehicles off, all of those vehicle uses off, then...
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Then let's, let's go ahead and do that, if, if it's okay with everyone.
List would edit to binding, um...
Use...
The prohibited?
The prohibited uses.
To the prohibited uses contained in number four.
Right.
So you're suggesting prohibiting vehicle service, vehicle repair, vehicle sales, and commercial parking?
Yes, sir, ma'am, yes.
That would leave retail, which would include a pharmacy.
But that, that would include, that would have to do with the size of his building and the parking that's available. And so there are going to be limits on those type of things anyway, so...
So if there was a, a change in use, other than a pharmacy, we would evaluate the parking requirements at that time? And if there was not sufficient parking, then they could not occupy the space?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And of course, if the new business did not have a, a drive-through, then they would have opportunity for additional parking at that point, correct?
Yes, which, which it might be, let's say in the future, not every business needs a drive-through, so that will like add more parking spots.
A convenience store would be allowed?
It would not, fuel sales?
I mean, just convenience.
Oh, just, yeah, just, general retail would be allowed.
No alcohol or tobacco sales.
Tobacco sales are not currently prohibited.
We can add that.
Okay.
Add tobacco and liquor.
And liquor, yes.
Currently, packaged liquor sales are prohibited.
Yeah, like vape and stuff, yeah, I think that's all.
Vaping, yeah.
Is there a question about, sorry, I couldn't hear from, from...
He's suggesting that he would like to also prohibit tobacco sales and, and vaping-related products as well?
Thought it was in there, even tattoo, um...
That was in there.
Yeah, I think we...
That was already, yeah, I don't think tobacco was.
Oh, okay. Want to add something, if, if you'd like me. Based on your suggestion last time, to go and talk to some of the folks that live there. So I did talk to some of them, I was not able, of course, you know, to reach out to everybody. Most of their concerns, as, as Rachel just addressed, it was, you know, traffic. And that was like the main, main concern, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy and ready to answer any, any of these questions. I did spoke, as, as I said, it was like four houses on the right, four houses on the left, down the road. I tried to speak to some of, and some of them are actually here tonight, you know, so. I just want to mention that I, I did consider your suggestions, so.
Thank you, just, just common courtesy.
Sure.
Hey, Mr. Moore, do we have all of the prohibited, so he can, okay?
You pronounce your last name Tlice, right?
Yes, like rice. Tlice, yes.
D-L-I-C-E.
T-L-A-I-S.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Tlice, you have agreed to amend, I don't know why I cannot get this, development plan condition four, to include the list that Rachel read as it pertains to vehicle repair, service... Sales.
Yes.
And you agree to add those to the list of prohibited uses?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then secondly, in by, in conditional, in development plan condition number eight, you have agreed to add this sentence. "The applicant agrees to construct curbing at the entrance to Whispering Hills Boulevard in order to prohibit a left-hand turn from the premises onto Whispering Hills Boulevard. The applicant further agrees to install, to install landscaping in the median if permitted by the Bowling Green Department of Public Works."
Yes, sir, I do.
We have some more prohibited, didn't we, to add?
The tobacco.
Yeah.
Did you add the tobacco?
Did not, thank you. The development plan condition four would also include a prohibition against tobacco sales or related nicotine products. Vaping nicotine products.
And commercial parking, correct?
Correct, yes.
Got them all, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thanks.
Just by show of hands, could we have the opposition, those that are all of you, okay. I don't know if you have specific questions, or if you have a spokesperson for your group, or you have someone that would like to make a statement. If you have, you just want to go into individual questions, then we can come up, you can come up individually, and we'll swear you in and let you ask your question. And let, you know, do you, yes, sir? Just, yes, sir, yes, sir, if you'd like to do that, just come up and we will do that. And after each person, we will allow the applicant to address those issues, ask, answer the questions. If you'd state your name and address for us?
James A. Williams, 143 Meadowbrook Circle, Bowling Green, Kentucky 42101.
And you swear to tell the truth, sir?
Yes, ma'am, thanks very much.
It's good to see you.
Biggest thing with this project is safety. But the traffic is bad now, just like coming down here, it took five minutes to get on the Russellville Road, making a left turn. And with this, you're gonna, it's gonna be tough with people coming from the west to turn in his drugstore, because you got to cross traffic with people going out. And then you got another subdivision going in, it's gonna be a lot more traffic just past Whispering Hills, I mean, going on the Russellville Road as you come into town. There're gonna be several units put in there. And as far as safety, anything can happen. I can tell you, I was going out about six years ago, and a person ran the red light there, and I got hit in my driver's side. I mean, it can happen, because it's hard to get out now. And as far as going down Whispering Hill, or Meadowbrook and coming back Whispering Hills, what's gonna keep a person, every once in a while you see them going down the wrong way now, on Whisper, going down Whispering Hills instead of Meadowbrook? And just don't put a business in our neighborhood, because right now it's all, you know, residential. And I would have a question for somebody that talked about commercial buildings. There's none back through, you know, as you go in Whispering Hills. Is that up further west on Russellville Road?
Commercial buildings that were referenced earlier were in reference to those on Russellville Road. Not, not, not in Whispering Hills, you're correct, yes.
That's what I was thinking. And I would say that normal standards recognized by this board are in the best interest of all parties involved. That being said, why would you, as a board, consider such a huge variances for this business in a residential area? There are small minimum variance requests, rear yard requirement, I'm talking about that was 40-foot. Now, some of these you may have already changed. Was 40 feet, and the request is for a 30-foot variance, only allowing a 10-foot setback from business to a single, single-family residence. Also, there is a 100-foot requirement from a non-speaker pickup window, which drive-through, and the request is for 80 variance, only allowing a 20-foot space between the pickup window and the nearest residential home. Now, you already talked about some of that earlier. This would definitely adversely affect and change the character of our subdivision. Not to mention the homes directly surrounding this proposed business. It will cause a hardship to them by traffic, noise, and property value. And then speaking of changing the characteristics of our neighborhood, we have a grass-green space between the divided road entrance to our subdivision, which you already have been talking about. With this proposal signage, we'll be adding to that space, making it look more commercial than residential. See page two of 35, under-site characteristics review. Right turn only signage and only one-way traffic signage will be installed. But if that happens, people in the subdivision, there's enough room, they come out and make a turn and go back if they had to, but without going on the Russellville Road. There's enough room between there, without having a problem, you know, with accidents and stuff. But if this all comes up and you put that in, it's gonna be a lot more safety hazards there. And three, referring page three of 35, paragraph, second paragraph, there's last two sentences, and you already discussed some of this. This requested change would allow for other uses on this property if you approve this without any input from the neighborhood. Can you exclude vehicle stores, vehicle repair, vehicle sales, commercial parking, and also exclude restaurant and grocery store? This board can make this decision per this statement. This will protect our neighborhood from being approved as a pharmacy, and then something else other than this proposed business being open without going back through this planning and zoning commission and have, and having input from the neighborhood. Because you know, if it changes one time, it can always go back and change again. The last one, referring to page four of 35, item four. "Since this proposal is a pharmacy only, can the wording be changed to no sale of alcoholic beverages by the drink? And omit, except in a restaurant, because it left the current wording, then a restaurant could be put in on this property." If a restaurant is proposed in the future for this property, they would have to come back through the planning commission and have input for our neighborhood. And there are several people besides what's here that couldn't be here because of their age or illness. Like, I know you gotta actually be here to be a witness in things, but like Evelyn Welch at 124 Meadowbrook Circle, Karen Campbell, 130 Whispering Hills Boulevard, Kim Melkey, 125 Whispering Hills Boulevard, and Sid and Toy Baker... and Sid and Toy Baker, which they couldn't come today, they're out of town, I mean. And is there any questions for me?
Yes, you mentioned a few things that we've already addressed. So, one of your concerns was vehicles, service, repair, and sales. And we've addressed all of those, I think.
No, I understand that, through the, I said some of it would already be in there.
So, have we fully and completely addressed that concern for you?
I think so, unless somebody else has something to say. Okay.
Okay, and another request that you had was regarding alcohol. Have we, we've added the restriction of alcohol. So, have we fully and completely addressed that concern for you?
Even if a restaurant comes in, make it so they couldn't serve by drink, which you know they can now.
Could be a question for staff, how do we?
Well, I will just make one comment about the size of the property and the building. It's not large enough to accommodate the required number of parking spaces for a restaurant. So, if someone came in a year or two down the road and applied to change the use of the property to a restaurant, it couldn't be approved with the parking provided on-site. Now, I will say that there are options in our ordinance to obtain a shared parking agreement or an off-site parking agreement if it's located within a thousand feet of the property, and it's properly zoned for the use that it's going to serve. So, if it is a concern of the commission with a restaurant use, it's my suggestion that you might want to address that, even though the parking couldn't physically be provided on this particular piece of property.
So, in its current condition, it's highly improbable?
Correct, but there are options in the ordinance to obtain shared parking agreements or off-site parking agreements with surrounding properties.
Let's explore a worst-case scenario. Let's assume someone did want to build a restaurant on this space, even though it just, it sounds implausible currently.
Would also be limited to the square footage and the Development Plan Conditions.
Given the information that we just discussed, do you still have concerns about a restaurant?
Possible, I mean, it can always come back and, you know, make a, come before the commission here and make changes, but if it's not a big enough property, then they can't, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. But the biggest thing we have on this is safety with the traffic. I mean, it's, I mean, it's just big enough this property is just to put a house in, you know, residential. And nothing against him, I mean, it's just that it's the wrong place. You got places down in Spring Hill, you know, places down there, and it's opening up, and you got a stoplight down there. So, we don't have a stoplight, because it's too close to the Veterans Boulevard. Okay, thank you. But safety, and some of the people here that came tonight are very concerned, and they'd like to make a speech to or talk to you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Did you want to make a statement about the restaurant or the alcohol sales?
Yes, I was thinking, since we already put the alcohol sales, I think that will include any kind of business that we're, you know, like even a restaurant or like alcohol shop, so.
So, you would not be opposed to, have we restricted liquor, all alcohol sales, even liquor by the drink?
Packaged liquor sales is currently prohibited, but there was an exception for sale of alcoholic beverages by the drink.
I don't know.
With a restaurant, so.
I mean, if you want to add the alcohol, yes.
You're suggesting to prohibit any sale of alcohol on the property whatsoever, correct?
Right, yes. Just keep beverages.
So, we would delete the last four words from the condition number four?
Do you feel comfortable?
Count the exception for a restaurant.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've had someone that made a statement, Mr. Williams. Do we have any, any questions from anyone? If anyone else would like to give us any additional information, we'll be happy to take that. But we do have all of these previous concerns.
Good evening.
Your name?
My name is Philip Henkel, I live at 131 Meadowbrook Circle.
And you swear to tell the truth.
I'm kind of in opposition to this. Mainly, I've only lived here since 2013, I moved down here. I bought this property in Western Hills, over on Meadowbrook Circle. Now, if you look at that entrance going into Whispering Hills, it's one way in and one way out. There's no marking at all, right now, never has been since I lived here. I've been coming out of there, and people are going down that direction, almost a head-on collision, you know. And my point is, the only walkway is on Russellville Road. Whispering Hills has no walkways on either side of the streets. A lot of people walk with their dogs, their children, and they gotta walk in the street. Now, if this thing is approved, are they gonna put a sidewalk around under Whispering Hills there? Or are people gonna get run over with cars coming out? That's my question, you know. I mean, you people gotta, you're the planning commission, you people gotta plan this out. Because right now, the way it is, it's not, another complaint I have also, if you come off Campell Lane, make a left on the Russellville Road, there's thirty yards from that intersection to that entrance into Whispering Hills. Now, if you ever been in Whispering Hills at eight o'clock in the morning, and you're coming out, and you gotta turn left, it's impossible because of the traffic at eight o'clock in the morning. And I can see what's gonna happen. The city's gonna put barriers in there like they did on Nashville Road, Campell Lane, where you can't make a left turn or a right turn. And that's what's gonna happen here. The only way you're gonna get out is make a right-hand turn on the Russellville Road, because you just can't, you can't make a left-hand turn. I mean, a lot of times, I go out the back way, clear down to the swimming pool and come out that way.
Yes, sir.
Because you, it's impossible to get in and out of there, it's too close to the intersection.
Yes, sir.
And I just, I just don't see, you know, it was zoned residential originally, correct? It was part of Whispering Hills subdivision, that property. And somebody gets the idea that, hey, let's make this a commercial property. That's not right.
That's why, that's why we're here, sir.
Then you people do all the variances, and let them, let them get away with it.
That's why we're here at this meeting, sir, thank you, thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
And I got one suggestion, though, could you turn your microphones up? Because I'm hard of hearing, and half us old timers, we can't hear back there.
Thank you.
I'll raise my voice.
What's that?
I'll raise my voice.
Yeah, I can't hear.
We have gotten the, the traffic issue, we understand the safety issue. Does anyone else have a statement, or do you have a specific question for the developer? Question, you'd like to make a statement, yes, sir? If you'd state your name and address for us, please.
My name is Robert Holes Apple. I live at 120 Meadowbrook Circle in Bowling Green, in the Whispering Hills subdivision.
Yes, sir, you swear to tell the truth.
My old grandpappy used to tell me that just because you can do something, doesn't mean you necessarily should. And I think this situation we've got right here is one of those where we really shouldn't do it just because we can't. Now, I know this man wants to make a living, and I have no problem with that. But within, I was gonna say a rock throw, I can't throw as far as I used to. Real close to this property, there are several other pieces of property that are for sale right now that would be zoned, probably, probably zoned, just like he needs it. Much more convenient, much better option than to change the nature of this subdivision. I moved here in seventy-four, and I was attracted by the green space that's out in front of the subdivision. We're losing that, we're losing green space everywhere. At my age, I want to make sure we got plenty of green space, because at some point, I'm gonna be pushing it up. There were several concerns about what might happen in the future. And I think we could sit here probably for two weeks and come up with a list of things that shouldn't be sold, shouldn't be done, won't be done in the future. There's a beautifully simple solution to prohibit any problems that may come up in the future. Don't change the zoning. That will solve all the problems.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to make a statement or ask a question?
Barry Rutledge, 118 Whispering Hills.
Swear to tell the truth, thank you.
My thing is, I know the entrance and the exit, there's so much traffic on our street now. I have lived there for fifty years. I know, I only look like twenty-nine, but anyway. So, but I've lived there since I was two years old, so. And when we first moved there, it was a very nice neighborhood. It was actually the do-all, be-all neighborhood, as I understand it, when my grandparents bought the house that I live in. There's so much traffic in and out now. It's, you can look, and there's one car going down, there's five or six others going down at any time. But the only, the other, the, I get to my point, I get nervous when I speak in public, and I don't do this very well. On the exit part, the sign, I know there's a proposed sign. Wherever that's at, that's such a small lot. You have to watch to see if it's not gonna be a visual impairment for people trying to turn out, especially at turning left, because it's, it's hard to get turned left at multiple times during the day, not just eight o'clock, but midday, evening. We had a hard time, like you said, coming out this afternoon. That, and then the one-way sign saying, "No left turn." People don't pay attention to those, because over on, by Lowe's, there's a little spot where Leslie's Pool Supplies is. It says, "No left turn," people turn left out there all day. Because I work over there, and I've almost gotten hit by people turning left. But anyway, that would be something else to consider there, because it's a visual impairment and everything, so.
Yes, sir.
I think that's it, because I'm getting nervous.
Thank you, thank you. And you want, did you have a comment, sir, are you?
Thanks for your suggestion about the curb, that should really help. Plus, one more thing is the sign, like the big sign, the monument sign. Can I use this? Okay. It's gonna be on this side. So, if you're leaving the neighborhood, there'll be nothing actually on the corner to block your vision.
Except for the water hydrant.
Huh?
Except for the water hydrant.
Yeah.
We can't do anything about it.
I can't move that, so.
Okay, that's one thing that I would like to add. Signage right in that area there.
What is it?
For the any signs to keep you from seeing down Russellville Road?
That's a, so, no, there would be no sign on the corner to see, like, down the Russellville Road. It'd be, I'm sorry, I'm turning.
That's quite a right, sir.
Sorry.
Oh, yes, that works. Okay, yes.
There you go, the click, yeah.
So, yeah, the sign of the farm, it would be on this side, I think, is it called Hope Bridge? Or something, the business? So, it would be like adjacent to that property line. So, if you're, if you're leaving from this side, there's nothing to block your, your view to see the Russellville Road.
Well, hopefully, that won't be a problem, these people are going to their senses and not change or something.
Thank you all.
Do we have anyone else with a question? And we have discussed the traffic issue, so.
Safety.
And safety, right.
Green space, property value.
Signage.
So, any additional information, we would appreciate.
Stephen Sawyer, 137 Meadowbrook Court. And I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
What I love about the neighborhood is that it's very mixed. You have obviously some people that have been there for years and years and years. You also have a lot of new families in there, too. It's kind of a lot of working-class folk in there. And I have five boys myself. I know my neighbor who lives just next door to me, she fosters kids. So, she has a lot of young kids there, and she's recently adopted a special-needs child. So, we have a lot of kids moving in and out of this subdivision, you know, and they like, we like to walk up to the Dollar General up the road and stuff. And like Mr. Henkel said, you know, there's, there's no way to get up there right now unless you're walking in the grass through there, and it's just not safe. Traffic comes in off of there really, really fast, you know. I think I'm concerned about more traffic going down and then doing, like, you can't see it here, but the end of this, the road forks.
Yes, sir.
And people come down there now and do a U-turn and come back out, you know. And I'm concerned that we'll have a lot more of that type of traffic pattern with that. And eight o'clock in the morning, there's, there's a school right up the road there. There is life skills across from where this place is. So, you have, you have a lot of things, eight o'clock in the morning there, buses are coming through, all that, a lot of traffic from people coming in to drop their kids off. A lot of traffic the other way, you got a lot of people from Life Skills that are arriving right around that time. It's just, it's a real bad intersection right there, really is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If you'll just come to the mic, we'll swear you in and let you ask your question. Your name, please?
I'm sorry. Yeah, my name is Lal, and last name is R.A.I.R.A. And I live in 106 Whispering Hill, next to that property. So, everything I tell, I swear to tell the truth, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I don't have more question, because everybody is more like experienced, they live long. I've been there just four years, it's really nice environment, it's really nice neighborhood, so. And my question is, like, every morning, I need to stand there by my small kids, my girl, to stop the bus, to wait the bus, our school bus. And there is a lot of car, we need to walk past the road to get a bus. We need to, like, cross that.
Cross it, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, it's really problem. One driver, they about to hit me one time, they don't see a bus, bus is other side. The driver come that side, it's really dangerous for us, and it's really hard. And my question is, where is the bus? Is it same place, the bus take my kids every morning and drop every, like, evening, or?
We would not have any, any control over where the buses are.
So, I'll address that for a second. So, as part of, part of our office, we have what we call the Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's just basically a fancy term for, that means transportation planning. But part of that is coordination and taking citizen concerns with transportation issues. So, I will bring that up at our next meeting, and we'll ask the public schools, Warren County, or is it Warren County or City Schools?
Yeah.
Which, which one?
Yeah, Bowling Green, yeah.
Yeah, we'll ask Representative Bowling Green City Schools if they can, can address that, as well as Bowling Green Public Works.
Okay, yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Another question? Yes, sir? Your name, please?
I'm the adjacent property owner, Wilson Wickerman.
And your address?
104 Whispering Hills Boulevard.
Swear to tell the truth, thank you, sir.
You said something about property values, talking about property values? Did I, did I hear that record from somebody out here? I'm from Oshie. Okay. So, could we go back? Could somebody help me navigate this? Go back to the line that you drew that was zoned for potential commercial use?
Oh, the future land use map?
Yes, future land use map. Okay, so. Yeah, so you've arbitrarily drawn a line here, just, you have a distance here from the Russellville Road, and you've gone through Mr. Peterson's lot right there. So, that tells me that it was a good plan here, but this is a neighborhood. And so, these people here are saying, "Why are you destroying our neighborhood?" That's an obvious question. I have respect for, Mr. Al, is what I call him, and the fact that he wants to do better for his family and move his business, which is currently in Central City, to Bowling Green, so he doesn't have to travel as far. He's chosen a lot that's vacant, then he's tried to develop it, and I respect that as a businessman. But that particular lot, being .24 acres, is, is poorly zoned. It should be a residential deal. And as a adjacent owner there, I can't believe that you would allow a business to be put within forty feet of the back of the house and allow a drive-through to be there, regardless of a speaker system? Not to mention, and you've mentioned this, with five parking spots, how much use of that business is gonna happen? That's bound to be a vacant building in no time. And I think he's probably pretty good at being a pharmacist, but with no portfolio here in Bowling Green, who's gonna recommend that they put his pharmacy down when the doctor asks? So, I think you're- So, I think you're looking at a potential vacant building in front of this community and I think that's abhorrent. He and I have discussed things and we will continue to discuss things that may affect his business and allow him to add more parking spots. And I would ask that you give us that time. Thank you.
Did finish up the questions? Anyone else? Anyone else with a question? Nothing else? Thank you. Is there anything that you would like to finish with, sir, or that? Any questions, commissioners? We'll have two motions. We'll have the zone change request first, and if that should pass, then we will address the variance.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditions upon the general development plan, docket number twenty nineteen thirty-three ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the following, compliance with the objectives and actions items presented in the staff report. Therefore, proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses' public hearing.
Second.
We have a second. Thank you.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Houston?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Oh, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a tie.
Please, sir, let us finish the, the business of, of the meeting.
So, there has been a motion to recommend the zone change. That motion has received a tie vote. The zoning ordinance and the state statute anticipates a tie vote and says that you may reconsider that tie vote at any time for a period of up to thirty days. So, that time begins now and if you wish to deliberate further amongst yourselves or if someone wishes to make the same or another motion, that can be directed to the chair and another vote can be taken. I think probably everybody, with the exception of Ms. Unseld, has been through this, but are there any questions?
Make another motion.
Make another motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Another motion to approve.
Second. And that motion would be verbatim to the motion that was made by Mr. Warren previously. Am I right, Mr. Gay?
Correct.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Houston?
No.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries this time.
Motion carried.
We still need a motion for the variance.
We need to act on the variance.
I make the motion to approve the request for variances at one hundred Whispering Hills Boulevard, docket number twenty eighteen V twenty-one. A variance of thirty feet from the requested distance of forty feet from the single-family residential district or use and a variance of eighty feet from the required distance of one hundred feet from a pickup window and a residential district structure or use. The testimony presented in the public hearing has shown that the granting of these variances will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Thank you. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Houston?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
No.
Commissioner Rich?
Oh, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried.
Vote the variance carried and the zone request carried, and that will be our recommendation
Thank you all. Do we have any new business? No business. Anything, commissioners? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Welcome.